List of all critical customers, and they're the first to get reached out to when these type of outages happen. In particular, classic cases are hospitals, schools, and facilities where we know, really know that a lot of people are being housed. I think one of the toughest things that you'll find from the PG&E industry is generally, we actually rely on people to call in to report their outage. And a lot of times, we don't know individually of certain folks being out. We can read off of the circuit and have an estimate of how many outages, but we really rely on customers to call in and actually report that outage. And I know, Mr. Mayor, like you said, that can be a serious challenge if folks' phones are out. The step that we really are taking to improve that is through smart meters. Smart meters are the exact, direct way that folks can contact us immediately through their digital meter and actually, we are already alerted that the power is out. Currently, in Napa County, we're about 98% smart meter deployed. However, a lot of those smart meters are not connected to the Wi-Fi system that is in contact to PG&E. And that is something that customers have to opt into. So currently, the majority of people actually have digital smart meters, but it's just the same as having their regular meter, except it's digital. But it's not actually dinging PG&E. And we encourage customers to go visit us online, or to even call us if they can, and opt into that program so that we can actually, it dings us immediately.
Is there a fee associated with that?
No, there isn't.
And do you know the phone number that people can call to opt into that program?
Certainly. Folks can call us at our line at 1-800-740-5000. And currently, throughout outages, we also encourage them to call us at 743-5002. And that way, they can track their outage. And for folks that have a smart meter and are connected, they will already be able to automatically track that outage.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the current or most recent outage, Council?
I have a general question. Is there something that the, when the power goes out, we used to have a lot of problems, and they've been very infrequent until now. Is there something that each of the customers should do, in particular, if the power goes out in their home?
We really encourage customers to call us.
No, I mean, not to contact you, but is there anything physically they should do in the house, like turn off the light switches, or anything like, you know, turn off fuse boxes, or?
Well, we really encourage folks to stay away from their electrical system unless they're electrician. We don't want to cause an unsafe situation. But I'd say the most important thing is really communication. At that point, you know, the power is down, and we really want to know what's going on in homes. For instance, if there are medical sensitive customers, we really encourage them to call us, so that we can get that information relayed out to them. But to answer your question, there's not too many things that the customer could do to actually improve their power being restored at that point, unless they actually have a generator.
No, I was talking about safety issues.
Correct. I would say, safety-wise, is really to remain in a safe place, you know, if it's dark and there's elderly or children around, to really not try and move around. Obviously, that could become unsafe. But really, we ask folks to really just call us and try and remain within to whatever place they are in a safe location.
Okay, thanks.
And one thing that I've already asked since Saturday of staff is that we work on our mobile phone tree, or at least some kind of alert system for our business community, as well as the Veterans Home, so that we have point people that can get the word out. If you're waiting for all of us to call, and they're dealing with customers and trying to continue to provide business service, or, you know, potentially hospital care, they may be too busy to be reaching out to you. So we want to know how we can best get that communication conveyed to them.
Certainly. And I will work with, I'm more than willing to work with anyone. I think it, I'm highly encouraged for the fact that I'm meeting very soon with the County of Napa, to go over the same protocol, more for overall system-wide. And even going back to Saturday's outage, there was contact from PG&E over to County OES and to the Public Information Officer. However, like you said, Mr. Mayor, I think it's very important that we at least get some communication directly to the town. And I'm more than willing to work with the town on any ways of making sure that communication is, there's communication during these outages.
As we talked earlier, Justin, that did not happen in the last incident. Nobody from PG&E contacted the town officials. You know, I did find out what was going on through other channels.
So we plan on avoiding that scenario anytime in the future?
Certainly. And I'm, I'm more than willing to work with Mr. Rogers and Mr. Wadsworth to really make sure that we have a plan in place to avoid those type of situations. And make sure that there's all lines of communication, not just from the county side, but also, like I said, directly to the town.
Yeah, I know, certainly with the NICSIL system that we have countywide that alerts many of us about emergencies throughout the county, a similar service, or I don't know if there's any way for PG&E to piggyback on that service, but that's, that's a great alert system that reaches out to all of us, so that we at least get the preliminary information. And then certainly, town staff and town manager would be following up with appropriate personnel. So I just don't know what flexibility NICSIL has, if it could include power outages or not.
Certainly. And I will work with Mr. Rogers and Mr. Wadsworth in terms of really making sure that we're looking at, in my view of, not just for town residents and for businesses, but also alerting the local media, making sure that that's a really good channel, and using, utilizing every process that we can of getting that out through the local media. Some cities have even an automated call system. It varies through town, so I'll certainly work with you guys and whatever works best.
Great, thank you. And I'm sure you have plenty to worry about this evening, but if you're still on property and you hear any more updates, if you could share that either with Graham or someone else's staff, so we can update the public, that'd be great.
Certainly. I checked my BlackBerry. I believe I have, as I was talking to you, about 10 emails or 10 phone calls came in, so I will certainly get you the most recent update.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. No offense, but we hope to not see you anytime soon.
I'd like to see you guys on a much better note as well.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd invite any other members of the public, at this time, if you'd like to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, please step forward.
I'm going to make one comment.
Okay, welcome, Rob.
Rob Buenberg, 2028 Adams Street. Power's back on my place, so.
I was just going to say, I just got a text.
Thank you. Were you one of those 10 BlackBerry messages on Justin's phone?
Good evening. Joanne Bozenberg, 4435 Morris Court in Napa. Napa Valley College trustee, and I am the trustee for the Town of Yountville, District 6, is part of my responsibility. I have with me tonight Dr. Ron Kraft, who's our interim superintendent president, and will be with us for a year. I just wanted to give him a chance to say hello and know who all of you are.
Thank you, and welcome.
Hi, and welcome. Let me move this up a little. Maybe that's better. As Joanne said, I'll be here for about a year. Name is Ron Kraft. I came in for an interim assignment, so I thought I would give you a brief update, just a little bit about the college. A couple things. The college, from my eyes, coming in from the outside, is probably what you already know, which is a remarkable institution. Part of my role in the last few years has been as a consultant or a college president in the, throughout the state of California. And so, I don't know if you know this or not, but it's highly regarded. Napa Valley College is highly regarded for both its programs, but also its setting. It's considered one of the jewels of the system and the top five campuses in the system. So it repeatedly makes maybe bigger news outside of the valley than it might end, but I carry that with you, just, you know, just so you know that. Couple things. I've done an analysis, kind of a SWOT analysis, just kind of coming in, just to take a look at it. And, you know, we have very strong, vibrant student body, good programs. I would say the college is in good shape, in terms of its ability to respond to community needs and also kind of move forward. The things that impressed me, which maybe are more visible out of the viticulture and winery, the growing hospitality, which we're working on as we speak, and are planning to see whether we can implement more hospitality programs across the valley to meet those needs, and then transfer and community ed, which is all, you know, increasingly important. I think I just want to thank you in one way for your leadership, and I'll be back up to speak on your vision for the college and what you see as leaders, and how we might fulfill, from your vantage point, either program voids, or, you know, building on programs. Just a quick comment on the state. Finance. We talked a little bit earlier about finance. It's dire in California, as you know. Our particular position at the college is reasonable. The board has been prudent and done a pretty good job at marshaling their resources. Depending on how particular propositions either get voted for or not, the, we'll see what happens in the fall, I mean, in the, in the spring, but our commitment is really to maintain a comprehensive community college, work on alternative revenue streams, if you will, grants, funding from other sources, joint venture partnerships. And in the coming months, I think I'll, I'll again reach out to see whether or not there's, you know, some kind of partnerships that we might employ up here, in terms of either local classes or just to meet your needs. So, thank you. It's a little slice of heaven to be here every day, you know, as you know. So, and I'm looking forward to being here for the entire year.
Thank you, and thank you for proactively coming up and introducing yourself and inviting us to be partners. So that's much appreciated.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for President?
Okay.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, Joanne, for all your-
We actually had a two-parter here.
All right.
I left on, this is my colleague, Bill Blair. I have left with the clerk some business cards that have email address and phone number on it. You want to tell them why?
No.
Thank you.
Three-part.
As Joanne said, I'm Bill Blair. I'm one of the new Board of Trustees at the college. And the, the, the board had decided some time ago that, that because we're going through this process of looking for a permanent replacement for our president that's left us, that we wanted to make this an open and transparent process as much as possible. And so to that end, we're all going out to the different councils and doing what Joanne and I are doing this evening. And so that's the extent of what, what I'm going to say, because Joanne is really here to talk about, just briefly talk about what the process is, and to give you an idea of how you can participate in, in our process. So, Joanne?
The reason we left the cards is any, any of you who may know somebody, or you yourself, who have some idea of what we should be looking for in a president, that's the input we're looking for. So we, as Bill said, trying to be transparent, but at the same time, we want the best thinking of all of our citizens in the valley. I mean, it's, it's our college. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for that opportunity as well. Thanks for coming here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Any other members of the public like to speak on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? I have a feeling we have an update.
Perfect time to sneak in and public comment. Good news, all power has been restored to customers. All, we, I gave initially a raw report of how many customers were out. A little bit over 3,000 customers were out, not 6,000 customers. We still do not know the cause of the outage, and it's being investigated. I will tell you, though, in talks with our electoral superintendent in the area, that we're going to be infrareding the whole entire electric line on Silverado this weekend, so that we can try and find any hotspots and try and avoid all of these in the future.
That's appreciated, thank you. Any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor, would this be a time to speak to an item that's on the consent calendar?
Actually, no, we're going to pull, I believe you're going to speak to the trolley item. We're going to pull that item, so that we can have discussion. So-
Thank you.
In just another minute, we'll bring up that item. But thank you. Any other comments? Seeing no others, I'll move ahead then to that consent calendar. We are going to pull Item 7I, which does relate to the additional trolley service that we are venturing into with the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency. So we will address that item separately. Are there any other items on the consent calendar to be pulled? If not, is there a motion for the consent calendar A through M, except for I?
So moved.
Your second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And now, we will address Item 7I, adoption of a resolution approving a new memo, memo of understanding with the NCTPA related to the Yountville Trolley Service. Vice Mayor, you asked to pull this item specifically. I know we wanted to address it and allow some public comment, but if you wanted to make an initial remark?
Well, I, I know this is something that's been talked about for a while. I wonder if maybe you, Steve, can just give a very brief overview for the folks who are here, kind of how we got to this point?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I want to commend both Public Works Director Graham Wadsworth and the staff of NCTPA. As you know, there was public discussion about what could we do to potentially improve the trolley hours, going back to our budget workshops. And over time, the staff at NCTPA came to us and said, we think there may be some programs that we can apply for, move some of our funding around, and work at doing some different hours. And would we be interested and support that? So with your all's prior direction, we said yes. Let's see what that will get us. And I'm very pleased to say that the NCTPA staff earns most of this credit. And they worked with us on repositioning some of the money from federal grants. Now, I will point out that some of this is, is federal revenue, and we will need to make sure on a regular basis that it will be there to accomplish our Fairbox recovery target. But with the restructuring, we were able to expand the service and stay within the budget allocation that the council had already provided. So we're very excited.
And can you explain the expansion of service exactly? I know it's listed here in the resolution-
I'll let, I'll let Graham share that information with you.
And I'll just note, in the recitals of the resolution, the $8,382 of town funds is already budgeted through the community promotions budget.
Correct.
If you could explain what exactly the additional service entails?
Okay. As you know, the trolley does not run on Mondays and Tuesdays. So with this additional funding, it'll be running from 10:00 in the morning till 11:00 PM on Monday through Friday and Saturday. On Sunday, it'll be running from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So there was also a gap on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, from 2:00 to 4:00, and that gap's been filled, so it'll be running full-time, all day, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, Sunday from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Great. That's pretty easy. It used to be really complicated to explain the hours and the gaps. That makes it a lot easier.
And we're hoping to have the trolley here, the new trolley, at the next council meeting on October 2nd, and then the new service will start in November. So there'll be a lot of information coming out of NCTPA media releases. We'll probably, maybe put something in the utility bills or something to try to encourage people to use the trolley more.
And if you could just explain also the relationship the town has with the NCTPA in terms of funding the base trolley service?
Sure. The NCTPA receives federal funding for running transit services, and Yountville Trolley is one of those, as well as the Vine 29 and the 10. So what agreement was put in place was that the town council agreed to pay 10% of the cost of operating the trolley every year. That includes not just the fuel, but the labor costs for the drivers and maintenance and all. By paying the 10%, then the trolley is made free to everybody in town. So residents, visitors, veterans, business, people who work at the, at the restaurants and hotels. So this is open. People can call. It does run on a route, but you can just call the phone number, and then the trolley will come to your home or business and pick people up and take them to their, where they'd like to go. For example, the, the children in the summer program will often go from the community center to the pool, and so they can all fit on the trolley. And then, you know, people from the Veterans Home can come down to shop in town and go back and forth. So it's a very nice service.
Well, I know that some residents, certainly our visitors, but even some residents are surprised when they learn, yes, you really can just wave it down, and it'll stop and pick you up pretty much anywhere.
Don't even have to call, you can just wave.
Great service. So, thank you. Vice Mayor?
I guess two clarifications, and I apologize if you answered the second one already. The staff report says it's 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. Is that-
Right, it should have been Saturday, but Sunday is a shorter, shorter period.
Okay. And then, when is this going to start?
Sometime in November. We don't have the exact date yet, but that'll be coming out in the media releases.
So we'll tell, we'll tell everybody first of the year and be safe?
Oh yeah, sure, you could say that.
Okay.
Any other questions about the staff?
It's going to be NCTPA boards tomorrow, so.
Any other questions about the staff report? I'd invite the public. Mr. Warren, I know you'd like to speak to this issue.
All day, every day. That'll be easy to remember. And I want to thank Mr. Graham and the town councilman and the town council for making this possible, for that members from the home can come and shop here anytime. They don't have to wait two hours to go back after stopping at the bank. So I think that there's a few small things I think I'll forward to Mr. Rogers about. I'd help promote it and get it clear in people's minds, just little small things that I'll do that separately. But I really want to thank all of y'all for making this possible.
You're welcome. I want to thank you also, on behalf of the council, for helping push this issue, so that we can make sure that we were able to work something out with the NCTPA. So thank you for your, for your help on that. Any other comments from the public about the expanded trolley service? I know you'll all be getting out there and enjoying it, so, especially with our new, our new vehicle coming online soon. So with that, I'll invite the council for action on, on consent, Item 7I.
I would like to, I would like to move that we approve Item 7I with joy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Unanimously passes. Yeah, great work, Graham and the, and the NCTPA staff. Thank you, Steve, also. We're going to move on to presentations, and we do have a few this evening. We're going to start with a proclamation declaring September 17th through the 23rd of 2012 as Constitution Week, and celebrating the 225th anniversary of the signing of the United States Constitution. And I invite James Beatty, who's currently the president of the Sons of the Revolution, and I think Bob Sutton, since Bob, you're here, you're not only a Yountville resident first and foremost, but past president also of the Sons of the Revolution.
Past president and treasurer.
And treasurer.
Not currently the treasurer.
Current treasurer and past president.
Yes.
All right. I invite both you gentlemen to join me at the podium for the proclamation.
You're welcome to join us, too.
I'll read this way. I know it's small type, so I knew to bring my glasses down here. Pardon my back, but I'll need to get this on our microphone. This is a proclamation declaring September 20, September 17th through the 23rd of 2012 as Constitution Week. Whereas the American Revolution secured the independence of the United States and made possible the vibrant system of self-government of the United States. And whereas the supporters of the American Revolution, through their vision and determination, enhanced the lives of countless individuals and made possible the system of equal justice, limited government, and rule of law that exists in the United States. And whereas the people who fought in the American Revolution made great sacrifices for their fledgling country. And whereas the 55 delegates who attended the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, 225 years ago, and the 39 delegates who signed the United States Constitution at the Constitutional Convention, irrevocably changing the course of history. And whereas the Constitution of the United States, a revered and living document, provides important rights to every citizen of the United States, secures the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, and sets the standard of democracy for the world. Whereas the delegates of the, the delegates to the Constitutional Convention in 1787 established the imperative precedent of compromise. And whereas the United States Constitution and its amendments outline the freedoms and the principles of representative government that are as strong today as they were on that momentous occasion in 1787. And whereas September 17th, 2012, marks the 225th anniversary of the signing of the United States Constitution, which is the supreme law of the land and the document by which the people of this country self-govern. Whereas to venerate the immeasurable importance of the United States Constitution and the day on which it was signed, it is essential to continually educate and celebrate the principles and legacy of the founding fathers. And whereas members, volunteers, and staff of historical, educational, and patriotic societies, including but not limited to the California Society of the Sons of the American Revolution, and the California Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, play an important role in promoting patriotism, preserving the history of the United States, and educating the public about the rights and responsibilities of citizenship. Now therefore be it resolved, I, John F. Dunbar, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the Town of Yountville in the state of California, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2012, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed this 18th day of September, 2012. Would you like to say a word, Fortune?
I would like to have Mr. Robert Sutton speak first. He was the person in our society that initiated this timely effort on your part to help us all remember the importance of the liberties that we appreciate today. Mr. Sutton?
Just a few words. The Constitution is the law of the land, and as I was taught, law is the support and cement of civilized societies. And it is an honor to be here and receive this proclamation from my adopted town, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
Just briefly, we represent, even in our ancient attire, the threads of what we're left are those who fought initially in the revolution. But we're very proud of how to educate people about our history. We have essays, we have recognition of public officials all across this state and this nation, where we dignify being Americans. We're non-political, but we're proud of our heritage. And we so appreciate you acknowledging that in our community of Napa Valley through Yountville's council. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. And thank you, James, for all that you've done to help represent Napa County, certainly through our World Trade Center memorial celebration and dedication last year, and several other occasions with our Veterans Home as well. So thank you for all you, that you've done for our community.
I appreciate these anniversary, underlying anniversary dates. There's another anniversary this year, which is the 200th anniversary of the War of 1812, 200 years ago. That was a deciding victory of Andrew Jackson in New Orleans. After that, there was no doubt that we owned the Louisiana Purchase. With all the cultural events in this beautiful valley, I thought somewhere, as we would hear, the 1812 overture. But it didn't happen.
We'll keep working on that. Thank you. Thank you again for being here.
Thank you.
We next have a proclamation declaring September as Napa County Health and Human Services Recovery Month. And I believe we have with us today, let's see-
They had to go up to council. There are apologies. I said I would accept that.
Fair enough. We have Dr. Karen Smith, County Public Health Officer, with us this evening to join me at the podium. This is a proclamation, National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month. Join the Voice for Recovery, it's worth it. Whereas the Napa County Health and Human Services Agency and countless others are educating our communities about how substance use disorders affect all people in the community. Therefore, it is essential to combat misconceptions associated with addiction. And whereas in 2010, an estimated 22.6 million persons- And whereas in 2010, an estimated 22.6 million persons, 8.9% of the population aged twelve or older, were classified with substance dependency or abuse in the past year, according to the 2010 National Survey on Drug Use and Health. And whereas recovery from substance use disorders is possible through a variety of treatment resources and recovery support programs. And whereas to help people enter a path of recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, the Napa County Health and Human Services Agency Alcohol and Drug Services Division, and the Napa County Advisory Board on Alcohol and Drug Programs, provide program activities supporting this year's theme, "Join the Voice for Recovery, It's Worth It." And whereas National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month is intended to celebrate people and families in recovery from substance use disorders who have overcome the stigma and other barriers related to receiving treatment and recovery support services. Now therefore, I, John F. Dunbar, mayor, on behalf of the town, the Yountville Town Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2012, as National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in the town of Yountville. Thank you again for being here, Doctor.
Well, I'm not nearly as articulate on the topic as my colleague Connie Moreno-Peraza, who's the director of health of alcohol and drug services, but I am the medical director, one of my med hats. I wanted to draw your attention, I have some flyers for you to, in both English and Spanish, for you and for the public, just to point out a couple of opportunities to learn a bit, a little bit more about substance abuse disorders. Tomorrow at Health and Human Services Agency Campus on Old Sonoma Road in Napa, there's a resource fair, should be really fun, actually, a lot of a lot of different agencies throughout the county will be there to talk about their role in recovery from substance abuse. On September 24th, there will be a summit, an all-day summit from eight to five at the Queen of the Valley Medical Center. Really going to dive pretty deeply into the science of addiction and recovery, what we know about best practices for recovery. It's a large and diverse group of of people, including addiction specialists, but also probation, and many other partners who throughout the county are really working to help people get into recovery and then stay there. And then finally, I'm particularly interesting to me is there's a parent education workshop, one that will be held in English and one that will be held in Spanish, which will be held at Valley Oak High School on September 25th. It's a really good opportunity for parents who are concerned about their children or whose children have already been diagnosed with a substance use or abuse disorder. So thank you very much for the proclamation. Again, my apologies on behalf of my colleagues, they're sort of doing the run-up the valley tonight and had to leave before they were able to accept. Thank you.
And I believe we're going to hear from you again in just a couple minutes.
You are, yes.
Thank you very much. Next up, we are very pleased to have our, the administrator of our California Veterans Home, Marcella McCormick, here for an update. And then we'll we'll bring Ed up after, or would you like to do it together?
We're going to do it together.
Then we're going to bring our president of the Allied Council, Ed Olson, up. This isn't two Eds, but it'll work.
It will. Thank you, Mayor, thank you for inviting me. I wanted to talk that the census is at 98%. We continue to be fully occupied, admitting somewhere between 12 and 17 per month to all levels of care. The budget we finished last year on 30 June at 99% of our budget, so we aim to spend every dollar we can on improving the home. Thank you for attending the dedication of the post office, having the post office remain for our veterans, and I want to thank the Allied Council for their support in keeping the post office open was really a special event for us to have that open and also dedicated to Mr. Ruiz. The Yountville Sun already did an article, but we are getting over $2 million to upgrade our cemetery, new fencing. Those of you who have worked the week before Memorial Days knows we could use some, a new sprinkler system, some new fencing, align our headstones, improve the ground around there, replace the trees that need to be done. So we did get a federal grant, and we'll be embarking on that. As we get closer with where the construction, when they put it out, we've, Ed and I have already talked about whether we're going to be able to have our ceremony up there next year, depending on how quickly they work in the scope of the job, but it's nice to get $2 million for what we're doing up there. We're also working on the the fire alarm system to those buildings that did not have a fire alarm system, which is mostly our, to the left, to the right side, those buildings, not the Holderman side. The fire alarms used to just give a general hallway in a general area, and now the federal alarms is a $3 million. The fire alarms will say the room number and the location exactly so that when the fire department gets there, they'll know where to respond exactly, and we want to provide that kind of direct care to the members that live at the home. So we're really excited by that. We also decided this year that we need to look at access for those who live in the memory care center, Holderman, and also Eisenhower. So right now, we're working on a project where there'll be two spots for family members to park and a sidewalk that goes right around the corner. Right now, even if you park, you got to go out to the street and come back up the sidewalk. We'll finish that. We're doing one over by Eisenhower where we'll have two parking spots and build a sidewalk that goes directly in the front door to assist the families with getting those that they love back after a stay. And we also got $150,000 to redo the front of Holderman to make that more ADA accessible and places for people to park. So we're scoping the job tomorrow with pre-bid on the, tomorrow morning, the nineteenth, with those that'll do the job for Holderman. The other two jobs are small enough to do in-house, but the other job will be done by a contract. So we're looking forward to really doing that. I know this isn't really exciting to you, but we did get enough money to redo what we call our re-therm system when you're in Holderman and on a special diet or even a regular diet in memory care or Eisenhower. We use cooked show, which at times can be challenging because the system's over 10 years old and the food has to sit directly on the plate and you can't do certain items. We did get $800,000, and we've also are now replacing that entire system. So we will, in a couple of months, be changing over, and the new system will allow us to do corn dogs and and some other breakfast items, eggs that they like better. So I know Karen, I was a dietitian, and I can see her back there saying, oh, my gosh, they get corn dogs. Occasionally, it's okay to have those kinds of things, and I'm a dietitian, so I'm watching all that stuff. But it'll allow us to broaden the choices for food that we have there, and also with items that are specialty items for change in consistency, we'll be able to do better. So we're really going to be working on that. And working with Allied Council, we're working on a new games area behind the member services building where we're going to do shuffleboard, croquet, horseshoes, which we'll work on. We really believe in getting the members out and getting exercise for them, but the closer we bring it to where they're centralized, where the library is and where the cafe is, we hope to get more people out and doing those kinds of things. So we do that. The bowling center is nearly finished, we had to get one more part. We decided the original stanchions they had were too large for a number of the carts and wheelchairs, so we ordered smaller ones so that we can have the same technology in there, but but smaller areas between the lines. I don't, that's where your ball comes back. I'm not a bowler, so you have to forgive me on that. But anyway, these can be big places, so it's smaller when it comes back. So we're going to do that. And our our real goal is to continue to get the members active, involved, and Ed's going to tell you about something this weekend, whether it's athletic, or it's art, or it's doing something, is to get them out of their rooms and get them involved. We're also working on the fishing pond and looking for a contract to do that with ADA accessible decking and also getting new, we have what's called Socks Fifth Avenue, a free clothing store for our members, and the trailer just got old, so we're doing a lease. Out goes the old trailer, in comes the new one for a seven-year lease, and then we never get to the point where it's starting to leak. So and that ends my report, Mr. Mayor, but I'll turn it over to Ed.
Thank you very much.
My turn. I can't hardly believe this, you know, everybody accuses me of talking too much, and I actually stood there and didn't say a word for quite a long time. That's quite amazing. Most people say, Ed, you talk too much. So I'm going to try to minimize what I'm saying, but I want to start out by saying the trolley situation, I can't tell you how much that means to all of us. I think that's one of the greatest things that could have happened relative to getting our people out and getting, the fact that, you know, it's going to be easy, it's going to say, hey, it runs from this time to this time every day, no big deal. So it's going to be easy, that's a big, big boost, and I think you should be all commended, everybody that helped make that happen, that's going to be wonderful. I would like to mention that we are having a, on Sunday, September 23rd, we're going to have our first grand opening of artists in residence. This is downstairs in the member services building. We have this huge, long hallway with great big blank walls. Well, now that's going to be with, starting with our artists, and they will have a section there donated to them, and we're going to have a working situation where they change this anyway, but off and on they'll be changed, but it's going to be great. And you all, of course, are welcome to come out there and visit our artists that are in, we have some incredible people that do some incredible work in all lines and all phases, but this is going to be another great thing that we're doing. I would like to also mention that a number of things, Marcella has told you about many and many of the things that are going, but, you know, it's like, seems like there's something new and wonderful happening all the time. And I think it needs to include you folks more and more. I'm a little disappointed, I think I've said this before, in the fact that the town advertised, and whatever you find in it, it, there's a map of Yountville, but you know that map, when it gets to the Veterans Home, it disappears. Really very little of anything shown. It's like we sort of exist, but we're a ghost. And I think we need to all work on changing that, because you guys are missing your bet if you don't include what the Veterans Home has to offer. Your tourists would enjoy going up there and spending some time and touring around, getting some tours. You know, it's there, it's wonderful, you all know that, you've been there, but, you know, you need, we need to share it, share it with the world. It's an incredible place, it's an outstanding landmark for the whole world to see, and I think, you know, as long as we control it and don't let it get overrun, which I'm sure we will, but it's it's a wonderful, wonderful place. And let's see, have I missed anything? I'm not sure, probably covered it all. Do you think anything? I'm sure there's more that I probably missed, but we'll get to that next time, and thank you all for your services, and we really appreciate it. Oh, by the way, I don't want to shame a couple of you because Margie and and Louis get up to the Veterans Home all the time, and I'd like to see the rest of the council show up, you know? Hey, we're a third of the votes, don't forget that. So come up and see us, we'd love to see you, and we love to participate. You guys participate in what we're doing up there. We're sharing more and more things, that's wonderful for us, because having more people up there, particularly younger ones, is is a really, it boosts us up there, the, you know, seventy, average age of 78, and it's, you wouldn't believe how wonderful it is to have younger people come up there and interface with it. That really makes a huge difference, so do whatever you can, and we enjoy seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think I'd like to invite the council, if they have any questions about the report, Vice Mayor.
I have one question, question. Marcella, you were talking about access. What's the story with the sidewalk from the, it's like the the bullet train to nowhere, the sidewalk to nowhere, between the baseball field and the pool?
We were working with our person who rents the ballpark, and they hadn't finished it, and we were using the prisoners, and it's, I know for the public, they see it stewed, but we've really been working on the sidewalks where our members use them a lot, and it's just not come up on our priority list as our highest priority, so.
Is that their responsibility to finish it, or?
Uh, well, we're not quite sure. But, you know, we're really looking at the other areas to to beef up, so, and get those done. Makes an interesting conversation piece, though.
Well, I see people walking in the street, then they jump over the rebar and get on the sidewalk, and then they jump off the rebar and.
Yeah. Yeah, also the cannon, we had to take the wheels off the cannon, so we got to find some new wheels for the cannon, and I got asked about the cannon, but the other ones were just, the wood had just disintegrated beyond that, so we're in the process of trying to find some wheels for our cannon, too.
I'm not sure that I've heard that before, that you're looking for wheels for your cannon.
Yeah, we're looking for wheels for our cannon.
Mr. Olson, did you have an additional comment?
Yeah, I did, I do have, and the other Ed, you know, we're known as Ed Square, by the way, two Eds are better than one. Anyway, he mentioned to me and reminded me that one of the big things is we're having a grand opening coming up shortly on the, our cafe up there. And of course, it's, it's really been a big bolster for us to have that cafe and tavern open, we can get beer and wine and hamburgers and hot dogs and all kinds of good stuff. And of course, obviously, your restaurants here don't have to worry, we're not competing with the, you know, the big guys up there. We won't compete with any of those kind of things. But I think it's going to be great for the 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 rest of Yountville, because it's going to be a place we haven't had in Yountville, where you can go and get a plain old hamburger or a hot dog or whatever, very little of that I've served here. This is great. Where can you go where you got a great view of the mountains and you can sit and enjoy out in the, out in the lounge there with screens with umbrellas to protect you from the sun, have a beer or whatever you want? I mean, come on, it's incredible. So come and join us, and we will get information out to you exactly when that's happened. And of course, as you know, we share all these things with you as much as we can, and I think it's going to be another great thing for Yountville, because it's going to make a big difference, already has for us. It's been a soft opening so far, which is the way all restaurants need to do, you can't just swamp them to start with and then have them fail or whatever. So it's working really well, the people there work hand in hand with us, we work well with them, we support them in every way we can, and I think it's going to be a great, great thing when it gets going. It's made a difference already, so come up and join us.
And given the number of times the cafe and the bowling alley have come up during Allied Council meetings, I'm sure they're going to both be very, very popular.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and like I said, you all need to get up there a little more often and and see what it's really like. Come in and visit me in the office or any of the staff there, and we'll take you on a, if you haven't ever been, had a grand tour, I'll even take you on a grand tour, so. It is most unbelievable place on earth, really.
Councilman Muller, any other comment?
Yeah, one comment or question I have, I've had many people in town ask about trying to find out when the baseball field, where their schedule is. It's something that a lot of people are interested in, I'd like to go up there, you just never know unless you just show up. How do you find that out?
Sometimes we don't reach each other. Communications, as I work on really hard, is, as we all know, the whole world, the biggest problem is communication. So that's one of the items, and we certainly, you know, the baseball season is kind of drawing down a little bit, but whatever's left, I'm sure we can get that information to you.
Napa Select Baseball. Napa Select Baseball, that's the schedule.
Okay, Napa Select Baseball.
Okay, let's write that down, maybe we can put it on our website or provide a link or something, so.
Which I also want to mention that, you know, are we have our, as you all know, probably, we have our own TV station, and you wouldn't believe how that is expanding and growing, and it is getting better and better. We expect eventually reach out to all the Veterans Homes and possibly to other veterans out there. We can do this with Facebook, with the internet, without actually worrying about having to, how do you get this out there? It's available, and we're working towards that goal eventually, so everybody will benefit from this. Even, you know, the public here, you you folks, and you'll be able to see some of the things that we're doing that are interest of you, but it doesn't, we can't broadcast it on KVAT, but we can put it on the internet. And so most everybody has the internet, and that should be great. So we'll keep you informed of all the great things we're doing, and thank you very much.
Thank you again for being here tonight. Now I'm going to invite Dr. Karen Smith back up for her presentation, the initial reason that she was here. And while they're setting that up, I'll explain that Dr. Smith is the Public Health Officer and Deputy Director of the Napa County Health and Human Services Agency, and she is here with a presentation, Rethinking Health: Live Healthy Napa County. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it, and thank you to Mr. Rogers and Ms. Holland Wagner, who's been joining us on our foray into Live Healthy Napa County. In the interest of everyone's time, I'm actually going to skip two-thirds of the way into the presentation. Perfect, thank you. And focus pretty much exclusively on sort of 18-month-long process that we've just kicked off last month that we're very excited about, and try to, I hope, encourage you to participate, and at the very least, have your outstanding representatives continue to participate with us in Live Healthy Napa County. Some of you may be aware, and some of you may not, that in the last six years, we've done two health needs assessments of Napa County, which covered the done two health needs assessments of Napa County, which covered the sort of usual, what are the key health issues in the county, what are, we did some prioritization, we did a great deal of data crunching, and the "we" here is a loose collaborative of the hospitals, Kaiser, Public Health, and the nonprofit coalition. So, we're a little bit unusual in that. A lot of counties do health needs assessments, not very many join together to do one that meets everybody's needs. What we haven't done before is take the next step beyond that health needs assessment and say, "Okay, what do we do now?" And that's part of what we're going to be doing with Live Healthy Napa County. Should I use this?
You can.
Either one. Ooh, I get a human assistant. Let's go forward. So, here we are. What we want, why are we doing this process? Well, what we know is that what each of us, all the partner groups, and also basically every town council, city council, local government entity, really wants to increase the health and quality of life of everyone within Napa County, bar none, and I think that's, I think there's almost no one who would disagree with that. In order to do that, we need to move away from looking exclusively at medical care, healthcare issues, because what we know, and what we are having increasing data to support, is that health really begins well before your doctor's office, and well before you have any illness. Health really comes from the way that you live, the way that you learn, the way, and the places in which you work and you play. And think, I think Yountville's actually an outstanding example. I was thrilled to see the cover of the Adult School come Walk Healthy with us, it's something along those lines, I didn't have it memorized. But Yountville has done some really extraordinary things in terms of maintaining an open space environment, places that are safe for people to walk, places where kids can play together. Those are all the things that go into being a healthy community beyond having good medical care. And so, we're really committed to looking at those aspects of health as well. And so, we're going to move away from this sickness and disease and start looking at prevention, and even more than prevention, just general wellness. How do we ensure that our populations can stay well? We want to create sustainable improvements in health in Napa County, because the only way to have a sustainable county, whether you're in Steve's world or in my world, requires that you have healthy population. And so, that, those are really our main objectives with this process. So, what we're going to do is we've created a collaborative process that we've called Live Healthy Napa County, and we're, we have at this point about 75 partners now joining us in the process. And the goal of this process is to have community members come together. And I want to stress, this isn't just the usual suspects, it's not just the nonprofit agencies, it's not just the governmental agencies, but we really want community members to come together, to be able to articulate what their understanding is of the specific needs of their community and the challenges of their community, so both their strengths and also some of the challenges that they have, define their own health priorities and goals, and determine what the solution should be. And solutions that everybody shares in. Every person who lives in Napa brings an expertise about what it is to have a healthy Napa County. We really believe that. We also know that this is not a one-size-fits-all county. We're not interested in a city of Napra-centric health needs assessment, or a city of Napa-centric health improvement plan, it's going to have pieces that everyone can get behind and/or share out. The other thing is, we're not interested in superseding anybody else's strategic plan. There are a lot of amazing organizations doing really good work in the county, whether they're providing mental health services, whether they're providing opportunities for children to engage in play, et cetera. There are lots of different nonprofit agencies, many of whom have done extensive outreach and strategic planning. Our goal is to just gather that up, so that in one place, we have a picture of what's out there. And then we want to try to achieve a shared vision of a healthier Napa County. So, what are we going to do? The first, we can go ahead. The first step that we're going to do is have a visiting process. We began that at our first stakeholders meeting in July. We will be doing some community needs assessment, I'm going to talk about a little bit more of that, and then some planning, and then we will actually take some action. This is, this is your local public health system. I can't help it that the health department's in the middle there, I didn't create the slide, it came from our national association, it's not that we actually think we're in the middle. The goal of this slide is to show you that when we talk about partners getting together to create a healthy community, it really requires all of these people. It requires the business sector, it requires the philanthropy, the philanthropists, the schools, also your traditional medical care system, but it really is much bigger than any one of us. And so, this is the group that we've called together, and we really had outstanding representation of pretty much every sector of our communities at our first meeting. Okay, let's go on. So, you can go to the next one. So, these are, again, this is just a reiteration of some of the groups that we've asked to have come together. Go ahead. And then, we're going to actually do four formal health needs assessments. One will be, which is the Community Health Status Assessment, it's going to be that, that sort of standard document. If you haven't seen the one that we did before, it's up on the Napa County Public Health website, it's a really good document, has a lot of information about the medical and health needs of the community. So, we're going to repeat that, we're actually going to expand it a little bit, we want to look more at the societal determinants of health, so you will see more in there about economic opportunities, you'll see more in there about safety issues, and a lot that has to do with the way we plan our communities and the policies that we know impact health. In addition to that, we're going to do a local public health system assessment, and that's sort of looking at that egg diagram and really saying, "How are we doing in each of those sectors?" A Forces of Change Assessment is going to bring together a lot of thought leaders and also policy leaders, and you all will be invited to join us as well, to really try to assess out, what are the major external forces that are going to force change in Napa County over the next 10 years or so, that we need to plan for, to think about. Obvious ones are things like healthcare reform, but we're really interested in what are the other challenges that we're going to see. So, for example, in Napa, we have an aging population, we have fewer young people raising families here. Those kinds of things, we're going to try to talk about, so that we have a good sense of what you all know that we may not know. And then, I think the most exciting one is going to be the Community Themes and Strengths Assessment. This is going to be a really significant community outreach effort, we're going to actually invite everyone from every community to come and join us, both in real community engagement sessions, some focused work with small groups of individuals, but also then we will have a survey that's available, both for distribution and online. So, lots of opportunities for individual people and organizations to get involved and to really talk about their communities. There will be at least one live, in-person outreach event at each of the cities and towns, and also Angwin, but we're actually anticipating that there will be more, because most of our nonprofit partners who are functioning in your communities actually are going to do their own as well amongst their populations. So, the goal is to get input from as many people as possible, in as many communities as possible. Okay, so those are the needs assessments that we're going to do, we'll roll those up and create a health needs assessment. From that, we're going to have a really thoughtful, strategic process of prioritizing what the issue should be. We're looking for things to work on that we think we can actually make a difference in, and that "we" that I'm talking about isn't just the public health department, but is actually that bigger group of people, because the goal here is to create a strategic plan that then the strategies for achieving the goals that we set will be owned by various partners in the plan. So, if the city of Yountville decides, or, excuse me, the town of Yountville decides that there are particular things they really want to work on, we're going to hold you accountable for that. If you say, "Yep, we're up for that," we're going to have you go through an action planning cycle, which is the next slide, and then report back. The goal here is to try to create something that's going to sustain itself. It's flexible, it's robust, it's deep rather than superficial. In the process, we're hoping that we're also going to teach people a lot about what health is and what creates a healthy community, and try to have the conversation be around things that are proactive, that are strength-based, rather than the stuff we can't fix. We probably can't do a whole heck of a lot about Medicare. We may not be able to do anything about the state budget, but there are things in our communities, each of our communities, that we can change, that will have a measurable, obvious impact on health, both in the short term, but also the long term. So, that's what we're going to be doing, I invite you to be involved, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do you have any questions about the presentation?
No.
One question I did have is, how badly are you feeling the impact of, you referred to the budget a little bit, and also...